I call out order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for Monday, July 8th, 2024. And we will start this evening with roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussein is absent with notice. Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Von Haas?
Here.
Commissioner Hentges?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here. Also, this evening in the chambers with me is Brad Davis, our planning manager, at the end of the podium. Next to him is Rachel Nasbush, the deputy clerk to the board. In the audience, I see Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, and Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and our county commissioner, Tom Wolf, as well. Good evening, Mr. Commissioner. Our first item of business is the approval of the June 10th, 2024, meeting minutes. Commissioners have had an opportunity to have those minutes and have reviewed them. Are there any comments or additions or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th Planning Advisory Commission meeting. So, motion, motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Hentges. All in favor, vote aye. Aye. The minutes are approved. I will now open our first public hearing to consider the consent agenda this evening. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the Planning Commission. The routine will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered separately. We have one item this evening on the consent agenda. It's number 2024 dash 29. It's a request to approve an interim use permit for home extended business to operate a painting business, Tressot Anderson, applicant and property owner in Section 20 of Spring Lake Township. Would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Consider the consent agenda.
Make a motion to close.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pika. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Entertain action on the one item on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as written and noting that the whole board has recommended its approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. At this time, I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? That item has been approved. If you came here this evening for that item, that item has been approved. The next item is our first public hearing this evening. It's a public hearing, number 2023 dash 24, to request to approve rezoning of a 67.82 acres from urban business reserve, UVR, to rural business reserve, RBR, preliminary plat and final plat of Sand Creek Business Park consisting of seven lots and one outlot on 67.82 acres. Messenbrink Construction and Engineering Incorporated is the applicant and property owner in Section 8 of Sand Creek Township. And making the staff report is Mr. Wagner this evening. Good evening, Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, on the screen is the subject 67 acre property, as you said, located in Section 8 of Sand Creek Township. The request before you tonight is to rezone the property from urban business reserve to rural business reserve and then preliminary and final plat of the Sand Creek Business Park consisting of seven lots and one outlot. The proposed lots will range from 2.53 acres to 6.62 acres. As the commission may recall, Sand Creek Township, end of last year, made application to amend the county's comprehensive land use plan. That land use plan change was essentially 17 properties in this corridor here, which generally were zoned urban business reserve. Some of the properties were changed to rural business reserve in the comp plan. Another property across the west side was changed to parks and open space because it's owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and other parcels were changed to transition reserve area. As that application went through the process, the township in their application essentially noted that this is an area that they feel is beyond the city's 2040 growth horizon and therefore the landowners in that corridor should be able to make some use of their property until such a time as urban services are provided. The comp plan amendment was submitted to the council, was set, was put out for comment and then was sent back, and the county board did adopt the comprehensive plan amendment on August, or excuse me, April 2nd, 2024. So, the comprehensive plan has been changed for those 17 properties. Now individually, those landowners can choose to now come in and apply for rezoning. So, this is the first application that has come before this commission with an application to rezone the property, and then any of those other parcels can follow suit should they choose to do something different with their property. So, as I indicated, the site is 67 acres. You can see on the south side of the property, it's, well, it's bounded by Valley View Drive, which is a paved township road up until it passes the scale facility in this location here. So, Valley View Road is paved to the north, but then going south from that location, it is gravel into the city of Jordan. Property is also west of US Highway 169 and south of 173rd Street. The creek that flows to the property is Sand Creek, which is a DNR protected stream or DNR protected water course. The upper portion of the property in this location consists of about 30 acres that had historically been a farmstead, less so over the more recent decades. So, some of the overgrowth had taken over part of that farm site. The area along the creek is a mix of wetlands and woodlands, and there is floodplain associated with this property that we'll talk about as we go through the exhibits. So, this is the proposed preliminary plat for Sand Creek Business Park. As indicated, it would consist of seven lots. These would be rural business lots. The plat would create those seven lots with a new proposed cul-de-sac that would be about 590 feet coming off of Valley View Drive. The cul-de-sac would be, would need to be a paved road per county ordinance. The seven lots essentially would, the developable area of the site would, is above the 100-year floodplain, which we'll show on some subsequent maps. But the area along Sand Creek, you can see Sand Creek delineated on the property, and then there was a wetland delineation completed, submitted to the Scott Sound Water Conservation District and all the regulatory Minnesota water agencies, and that delineation was approved. So, this is the proposed development, the preliminary plat. I'm going to go through some engineering plans, their grading plans, and there were comments from County Natural Resources in your packet. I'll do my best to explain kind of how they're proposing to develop. We do have a representative from Messenbrink Construction here as well as their consultant planner, so they're going to come up after I finish my presentation. I just wanted to show you these slides. So, for a plat, the developer essentially just has to show that each lot is buildable. So, they need to show a building pad on each lot that meets the required setbacks. So, these are building pads proposed, but this line here surrounding the property, those would be the required setbacks. So, technically, that building could move anywhere within that footprint. But the other thing we really look for or that they need to show is that they have septic areas for each lot. The septic areas can go 10 feet from a property line, so the setbacks shown on here are the building setbacks. You'll note in red, so this area is designated as the flood zone. So, in 2021, the Minnesota DNR, with assistance over the years from the county, but also FEMA, adopted new regulatory floodplain maps. The old maps were from 1987, so the new maps were adopted in February 2021. So, the flood zone reflected on here is the flood zone, and it's indicated with an AE, which is the 100-year flood with an elevation, with a known elevation. So, you can see where the floodplain is, and essentially the applicant is proposing to essentially stop the lots, the buildable lots, at the flood zone. So, they're not occupying parts of the lots within the floodplain. There's a proposed wetland buffer, so depending on the quality of the wetland, there's a Minram analysis that's submitted. So, a buffer is required around all wetlands. Typically, that's 35 feet for most wetlands in Scott County. So, they can't grade or do any development or locate septic within those wetland areas. So, these just show the septic sites along the other lots. There was a comment memo from Scott County Environmental Services. They have now, or were out to the site to do their SWAS investigation, actually with the developer's septic evaluator. So, there's just some minor changes that need to be addressed prior to county board consideration, but nothing of great significance there. This moves into the grading and stormwater plan. So, the additional lines on the map show proposed drainage systems, utilities. So, when development is proposed in the rural area, there is no municipal sewer and water. So, storm runoff and everything needs to be captured and addressed on-site by the development. That is to a pre-settlement standard, so before this site was ever developed, there's a rate that the development must meet, and they do that by a series of either infiltration or stormwater ponds. In this situation, they're proposing three infiltration basins, which you can see here, here, and then down here. So, the site essentially flows north to south from the road down to the creek, so the basins would be on the bottom portions of the lots. I prepared this exhibit because we did, well, I should say, our natural resource office did receive some comments from some folks about groundwater and groundwater protection. I'm not an engineer, but this is from the University of Minnesota. The Minnesota DNR, if you go to their website, also has information about the purpose of stormwater facilities, stormwater treatment, and how that works. So, essentially, what the developer would do here is they're proposing to create three infiltration basins. And you can see on the bottom, the text basically notes that an infiltration basin is either a natural or, in this case, constructed impoundment that captures, temporarily stores, and infiltrates the volume of water that's created by that new impervious surface. So, right now, the road, the buildings, all of those, they can design this site for 75% hard surface. So, those infiltration basins are designed to capture that water, and then they're required by county ordinance to infiltrate some of that water in, and it ultimately reduces the runoff off of the site. So, one thing they cannot do is allow that volume of water to flow onto adjacent properties or into Sand Creek. And you can see that the other thing that a pond does, or infiltration basin does pertaining to groundwater, is they construct these with different soils, and I'm sure Commissioner Huber can add if he needs to. But they bring in different soils that essentially act as a liner and vegetation, and that holds the water, but it also treats the water. So, we know with development, whether it's urban or rural, that there are, you know, fertilizers or other chemicals that runoff properties. So, these basins, the other thing that they do is that they treat the nutrients and pollutants are infiltrated from the stormwater, and it says through chemical, biological, and physical processes. So, these infiltration basins are designed and engineered to not only take the water but also treat the water before it's released into an adjacent property, Sand Creek, or into the groundwater. So, it somewhat works like a septic system, which treats the wastewater before it filters in the soil. Similarly, that's the purpose of an infiltration basin, to treat that water, get the pollutants out of it before it gets into the groundwater. So, and then, this is just more information that, on how that works, but again, this is from the Minnesota, University of Minnesota. The DNR has information, but essentially, it just, right here, functions ultimately reduce stormwater pollutants, increase groundwater recharge, which is a beneficial thing, and decrease peak flow rates. So, that water in the rain event goes into the infiltration basin, is treated before it would runoff into any wetland or a creek. And so, these are just some of the more, their grading plans, but here, here's like an example of one of the basins. So, that basin will sit up above the 100-year flood elevation, so any water runoff from these sites is piped into that basin, and then it infiltrates, it sits there and infiltrates and is treated to prevent it from going into the wetlands and the flood, and the flood areas. So, there's just two more around the sites.
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on that. You're talking about infiltration. What they'll do a lot of times, because the soils out here are so permeable, they'll probably put a kind of a mix of silty sand, topsoil mix in there to slow it down a little bit to treat it. And then also, a benefit of that is it cools off the water, a little bit off the tubiness of that, it sits there and cools it off before it goes back into the creek. So, it's a positive thing, too.
Yep. I should note that what the commission is reviewing tonight is the plat, the development plan, the overall plan for the development. At this point, the lots are not created, so this commission would make a recommendation to the county board, should the plat be approved. Individual lots would then be purchased and built on, and those individual uses would need to come likely back before this commission for a conditional use permit, interim use permit, or some permit where we delve more into the actual site development. So, once we know, you know, where the buildings go in, if they're going to have any outdoor storage, anything like that, that would come later through a subsequent application. I did want to note, there was one other comment that staff had received pertaining to groundwater protection. So, I explained kind of the stormwater component and how that works. The subsequent applications that would come forward, so whatever business that might be, if it's a landscape operation or a contractor yard, or something that has vehicles or trucks or changes oil or deals with hazardous chemicals, those businesses are required by conditional use permit and county ordinance to obtain a hazardous waste license. Scott County Environmental Services licenses all businesses in Scott County, whether it's in the township or in the city. They license all those businesses for hazardous waste. So, once that user is known, our staff goes out and does a site review. That person is issued a license based on what they do. So, if they change oil, they have to, they have to put that hazardous oil chemical in containers and show how they store it so that it doesn't leak or doesn't spill. And so, those licenses, depending on the level, are, can be an annual review, or if it's somebody who just does paint, that would generate, you know, paint like somebody would at their house, it's a minimal generator, and they just have to do a report. They're not inspected annually, but the higher generators are subject to annual inspections. And like I said, Scott County does it for Jordan, Shakopee, Savage, and lots of communities that are along the Minnesota River, which we saw has flooded recently, and there was issues with businesses in Savage, but they've been doing this so long, they know that they need to move their stuff and get it out of the flood zone when this comes. So, just wanted to note that, that the hazardous waste license is required. So, those are kind of generally the comments we've heard from, at a staff level, and I'm assuming there are some residents here that will probably add on to that. Before I end here, I do want to note Chad Sandy and Matt Stordahl. Chad Sandy is from the Sand Creek Town Board. Matt Stordahl is the township engineer, so they're here. If you would have any, I think Chad will kind of fill you in on where the township's at. It was noted in your staff report that due to the 4th of July holiday, the township had to move their meeting to this Thursday, so we do not have a township recommendation. Our staff report recommended subject to anything that the township would have, so it would not be forwarded to county board until the township does make a recommendation. The township attorney would need to draft a development agreement for the improvements that will be made here. I don't see the city. City of Jordan did provide a comment letter, which you received, and maybe the applicant's representative or the township can talk a little bit to that. But at this point, I think I will turn it over to Jennifer Haskamp, who's the consultant planner for Messenbrink, and she has a short presentation that she will provide.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jennifer Haskamp. I'm the owner of Swanson Haskamp Consulting. I've been working with Messenbrink Construction since beginning. I think I was before you when it was much colder than it is out there today. So, with me tonight is Justin Baum. He is the president of Messenbrink. He can answer any questions you might have about specifics related to the development. But what I thought I would focus on very briefly is to just kind of go through a few of the main questions that we heard and that were also in the city of Jordan's letter, and obviously, to do my best not to report what, repeat, excuse me, what your staff just reported on, because they did a great job and covered a lot of material. So, what we heard were kind of three primary issues that were included within the city's response as well from Jordan, and then also some of the comments that were referenced this evening. So, the first one, there was some question about whether or not there would be any export or mining of materials on our site. I do know that there was some discussion about that with respect to the Hentges site. In our case, we are not planning to export or mine any materials off the site or the development area. There may be some import of some materials for the construction process, but nothing significant, and obviously, none of that fill or alteration will occur within the floodplain, the delineated wetland area, or the buffer areas. So, from that perspective, it's all within that sort of development extent where we're proposing to do work. There was quite a bit of conversation, actually, I think even back in January, February, whenever it was, about the natural resources portion of this, and in this case, it's Outlet A is where a lot of that focus is. So, Outlet A is where the FEMA floodplain is. It is where the delineated wetland area is, and as staff noted, the lot line's kind of abut where that delineated boundary or area is. So, there was some question about what's the plan for that area? How are we going to treat it? Because when we were here back in the early part of this year, we talked a little bit about putting a conservation easement over that outlot area, and then also, would the fee title or the ownership part of that outlot be transferred to some kind of nonprofit or conservation-minded group? So, from that perspective, we have identified it as a specific outlot or separate outlot. That's very purposeful, because as we progress through those conversations with what groups might be interested in taking fee title ownership of that portion of the property, you have to have a very distinctly legal boundary that's described. As it stands, we don't have that group identified, but we are continuing those conversations. So, as it stands with this plat, the ownership would be retained with Messenbrink at this time. However, a conservation easement would be placed over the entirety of Outlet A. So, the fee title portion of it, until we find the appropriate owner for it, would remain with Messenbrink, but that conservation easement would be perpetual, and it would run with the land. So, from that perspective, it would be fully protected. The other part to point out, which if you look at this graphic, this was in your packets, although the green was not, I just want to highlight the fact that that green area around the perimeter of the proposed development area is really, once the septic sites are, and the septic systems are installed, once those infiltration basins are constructed, that the vegetation that's proposed in all of those, in many ways, is native species. It's pollinator-friendly. They're very specific seed mixes that bring in and will help to infiltrate the water, clean it. They function as a significant part, if you will, of the stormwater system. So, from that perspective, it's doing double duty. Obviously, it's taking the runoff, it's taking the water, but it's also bringing in some plant types, vegetation, that will assist with bees, pollinator-friendly types of habitat, and then also perform as part of the stormwater function. So, as it stands, that green area is approximately 14 acres, which is a significant amount. So, it's bordering that designated outlot area. This green area obviously would be retained by Messenbrink because it's part of the functioning of the site from a stormwater perspective, but establishing that vegetation is, first of all, incredibly difficult, as we talked about today in my office, but being committed to it and making sure that it does get established in those areas and maintained long term. So, I know there's quite a few folks who might be interested in this in the audience. So, just for reference, we put together a list of, if you looked at the seed mixes that are provided on our plans, in the restoration plans, you can see here that we have a pretty significant mix of different types of plants. They are all actually, the seed mixes that got established, I like to highlight the septic sites in particular. The University of Minnesota and MINDOT and the DNR have all kind of looked at what types of plants, what types of vegetation would work well on those primary and secondary drain field locations. Obviously, the root structure is really important in those areas, and they can't be very deep because of those systems. So, they have very specific seed mixes that they've identified to make sure that it doesn't interfere with those septic system areas. So, that, from that perspective, those drain field areas would have a little bit different seed mix, but it would blend in with the perimeter of those infiltration basins. Finally, the last question, and I think this was really driven a lot by the city of Jordan, was related to the utilities and a little bit of clarification in terms of how the planning for the utilities will eventually be able to hook up to the municipal systems, when and if that becomes available. So, I'm going to use a graphic from your packets again as my reference. If you look at this graphic, you can see that the blue is the water, and at the south end, where you see that sort of black circle, that is the wellhouse. So, as it stands, a community well would be constructed. Obviously, that water line will go in from the very beginning because it is going to serve the entire development. You can see the water stubs coming off as you traverse and go north on the right-of-way. Each of those stubs will obviously be hooked up once the building is constructed. You can see that it stubs out or ends in the right-of-way of Valley View Drive. That's so in the future, if the city decides that this becomes part of the municipal system. It's very easy, it's already been constructed, it's in the right-of-way, we don't have to dig up roads.
Mr. Chair, if I could just for a minute? Commissioner Robbins? So, who owns the water system?
As it stands, this would be owned by Messenbrink. This one, as it, but once the municipality extends services or wants to, then that becomes part of the negotiation to hook it into the city's municipal system. So, the city could either hook up directly with that stub and leave it as a private system in the future, or they could incorporate it into their system if they wanted to.
But as of right now, Messenbrink will own the water?
That's correct. It says if you had individual wells on every single lot, but instead, we've lot, but instead, we've consolidated it onto one. So, it makes it much easier from a hookup perspective in the future to bring it into the municipal system if that is desired.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'm glad you guys are looking at being proactive with potential sewer setup, so it's not so disruptive to your property. So, I think that's a very good thing.
Thank you. So, secondly, that red line, that's actually our sanitary sewer line. So, as it stands, that red line would be, and of course, this is where Justin had to help me out, an SDR-11, three-inch force main, that would be placed in, once again, in the roadway. And you can see off that, we've got those red stubs coming off. As it stands under this plan, because we'd have individual septic systems, that, that red line would be installed, but it won't be hooked up, because we're, we're basically planning for the future. That's the intent of what could happen in the future if and when the sanitary sewer is brought to the site. So, the pipe will be in the ground. It'll be in the road, so we don't have to rip stuff up. And if that happens at such time, that would happen, then the individual septic systems would be abandoned appropriately. So, they're sort of two separate systems. There's a little bit, it seems, confusion that somehow they were connected. They are not. The red line is pre-planning, essentially, and doing it in such a way that it would meet the city's specification for how that would be hooked up in the future. So, I think that covers everything that we heard, in addition to what we obviously heard from staff and that staff addressed within their report. So, with that, I just thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions right now?
I have one. I'm sorry.
Jennifer, I just have one question. The last slide that you showed was some detail. Has this level of information been shared with the City of Jordan?
So, I don't believe we've sent it directly, so I'm not sure if the county shared it with them or not. It is in the plan set. We just highlighted it in the red and the blue. This is provided on the full plan, so they should be able to review it. But obviously, we'd be happy to have that conversation too, to make sure that they're aware that it, it's in the plan and that we're planning for the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Pika, did you have a question?
Yeah. You said that the lots will stop short of the floodplain. Who will own that strip of land and then maintain it after the develop, it gets developed?
Yeah. So, as of right now, Messinbrink will, will own the whole thing. So, they will still retain fee title ownership underneath the outlot as well. And so, as it stands, we would be responsible for it. If at such time that outlot does get donated, for example, to a conservation group, the outlot boundary would be what they would take over, and we would maintain up to that boundary, so there would be no gap.
Okay. So, and if there is a flood or whatever, you would pick up the debris from the flood and such?
If it's on our portion, yes.
Right.
Yes. And as it stands, we would own all of it. So, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robbins.
Let me just ask one other thing. Is, is any of the, the present flooding that's happened and continues to happen, has that impacted anything on this project at all?
To my knowledge, no.
It's just really, really wet down there.
Well, yeah. I'm, I'm sure.
I think Mr. Wagner can address this.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins. So, staff went out and actually met with representatives from Henches. Was that a week ago? Week and a half? Yep, a little over a week ago. So, a couple county staff went out and took some photos. So, this is a photo looking along Valley View, which is over here at the entrance of the site. So, like I said, this is just a few days ago. So, this is what the site looks like, entering onto the property. You can see it's still vegetated. This goes more, so this is looking be to the southeast. So, the creek is down in the tree line here. So, this is still that upper portion that's going to be developed. And then, as you get, this is more to the southeast. This is where, like, the old farmstead used to be, so this is where the buildings were removed. And then, oh, I'll just jump back. So, these rocks are right here. So, the farmstead was right here. And then, the trees are kind of where that, where the drop starts to go down into the floodplain. So, the, the developer, I should state, the county, the county has no regulations on trees. So, there was some tree clearing done, but doesn't matter if it's this property or any of your properties. We don't have regulations that prohibit, prohibit clearing of trees. So, they did clear trees last year in the developable area, but they left the trees where the flood and the wetlands are. And it's hard to see, but the creek is down here. So, this is the high water from the creek. So, with the current flood we had in the last couple of weeks, you know, as Justin said, there's some wet areas, but the developable area was still dry. So...
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Wagner, I just had a question about the roadways, the access roadways. I was wondering if you were going to address those at all, like Valley View and then 173rd?
Oh, yeah. I should.
And then, isn't there a bridge on 173rd down there too?
Yes. I will, I will start that, but I may have, I may have Chad or Matt from the Township come up and explain the roads. So, yes, the Township and county, and I believe MinDOT, have been working towards improving 169 and removing accesses. Currently, 173rd Street connects to 169, but there also is a railroad right here. So, there's a railroad crossing there. Jordan Avenue comes down and, actually, what I'll do, I'll switch over to the GIS map at that. There we go. All right. So, yep, 173rd is right here, Jordan Avenue. They both connect to 169. They both cross railroads. So, the Township has been successful, was referenced in your staff report, in obtaining some grant funding to do various projects in this corridor and improve traffic safety on 169, but also on the frontage road system. As you indicated, Bluff Drive to the north, there's a interchange going in there that will eliminate access, or actually, it's going to be right here, a crossover and interchange. But the goal is to remove those direct accesses to 169, remove the railroad crossings. So, the project that I think Chad and, and maybe Matt can talk more about, will eventually eliminate these two and essentially make this, make this connection. So, this becomes a frontage road system up to Bluff Drive, where any vehicles, trucks, what have you, would make, would have a safer entry and exit onto the highway. So, there'd be elimination of crossovers on 169, crossovers on the railroads. So, a lot of beneficial things. And then, I think I would have maybe Chad or Matt talk about Valley View. It, it's more pertaining kind of in front of the next project, but going into the City of Jordan, there also is a, a jog here where there's another railroad crossing, and the goal would be to have Valley View paved and have that crossing adjusted to a safer, you can see right now, it's kind of at a skew. So, they would do a, a project along the whole corridor. So, I don't know if Chad, maybe if you or Matt?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Greg, on Jordan Avenue, so Jordan's going to hook up to 173rd, but it'll be on the west side of the railroad tracks, so they don't have to cross railroad tracks and then go north to Bluff Creek. Okay.
Correct. Yep.
That's my thought.
I don't know, maybe this would be a good time if Chad or the Township have any comments or any, any more input on the road.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Greg did a pretty good job of explaining everything, but we've, we've been fortunate to be the...
Excuse me. Who are you?
My name's Chad Sandy. I'm the chairperson for Sand Creek Township.
Thank you.
Okay. We've been fortunate at Sand Creek to be able to put together a couple of different grant packages. One is called an LPP grant, and another one is called an LRIP grant. The LPP grant refers to the area connecting Jordan Avenue to 173rd Street. It would eliminate two railroad crossings, and then it would close two, two current intersections with 169. So, you can imagine the railroads in favor of that, MinDOT's in favor of it, and, you know, and, you know, but it's for a lot of good reasons. It's, it's going to really help us make that corridor safe, safer, which is the entire reason for the overpass at Bluff Drive. But furthermore, we were also fortunate enough to get the LRIP grant, which, which from that paving that stops down at, on Valley View, where the paving stops going all the way back into the City of Jordan city limits, we, we got a grant that would allow us to build the road, improve the road to our 10-ton Township standards, and then, and then do a new railroad crossing there, and, and then, and then have it paved. So, the, the situation that we're in tonight with, with both of the developers that you're going to be hearing about, is that it's, it's a little unique, because so much of this, of these new projects that we know that we needed to get funded, funded, you know, when we get, when we're fortunate enough to get a grant, then we, we're able to kind of put it into that bucket. And so, the, so the developers have, have agreed in concept to be responsible for, you know, larger portions of, of the whole infrastructure network, instead of just specifically in front of their development or, or, you know, leading to their development. So, so that's kind of the whole, the whole goal. And, and one of the things that we are, are kind of working on with the railroad crossing on Valley View, is that in, when Valley View gets paved, and when we get this whole new ring road system taken care of, it'll, it, you know, it will obviously, it'll obviously cause the, the traffic that is traveling there, when they're traveling on a paved road, you know, you're going to have increased speeds. So, our intent is, is to, to slide the, the railroad crossing about 100 feet to the northeast, and, and that, and then we would create what's called like a 20 to 25 mile an hour curve system in there that would, that would kind of calm traffic, and it would, and it would also, you know, kind of give us a little speed buffer through that, through that corridor. And then it'll, it will widen the, the roadway at the crossing in order to accommodate, you know, the new traffic that we're going to have here, more trucks and, and some additional cars. So, is there any other questions about?
Do you have a timeline on that?
Oh, yeah.
We do. Yeah. So, most of, most of that stuff is being engineered right now. It's being designed. We're kind of in the final, final stages of design. And then, we plan on 2025 construction.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Robbins.
Is that the timeline for the road and for the development, developing of the business park here, that going to be, that's going to zip together pretty well?
Yeah. Yeah. We, we feel pretty confident it's going to. You know, the, this whole process has been a lot of starts and stops, and, and we've, we've had some challenges, and we still continue to have challenges with our Bluff Drive intersection with the UP Railroad. You may have heard that. But we are actually making steps every day, and we're getting closer to our goals. So, to answer your question is, that's, it's a big part of our plan, is to carefully stage these, these pieces of construction, and to get them so that they all, you know, kind of come together co-terminously into the 2026 season, at which time, I think Jordan's intersection will be in full swing down there. So, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of construction in the next few years, but, you know, it's going to be worth the wait, you know, when it's all done.
Mr. Chair, Bluff Drive interchange, is that going to be about 26 also?
It'll be, it'll actually be 2025.
Okay.
But it, it's going to actually, we're hoping, we're hoping to start it this fall.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
Chair, I just want to comment that Bluff Drive, it's, I think Greg called it interchange, but just so we understand, it's an overpass.
It is.
Right. Okay.
Greg's correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Did the applicant want to make any comment, any further comments on this? This is, and we're going to turn over to public hearing. Anyone who wants to make comments can come up to the podium. There is a sign-up sheet at the podium, and, and if you start with your name, that would be great. Anyone who has a comment can come up to the podium.
Okay. There is a cameras, my understanding, if we wish to put our own visuals up.
Okay. Mr. Wagner will help you out with that. Make sure that we can see what you're putting up.
All right. My name is Peggy Jo Donat, and I have been intimately involved in the area for about 35 years. And I, I've lived nearby. And I think there's an invisible man here in, in this whole story. Couple invisible men, by the way. And one of the main ones is the extremely thin soils that exist in this area, which affects the infiltration rate, which is rated as very fast. So, anything, any water that, that hits the ground there is in the groundwater in a matter of days or even hours. The other invisible man here is the extreme flooding, which is regular. In the 35 years that I've been here, I've ridden horses around. You go slowly on a horse, you get to see, you know, what things are like and how deep they are, and how fast they come up and everything. And I know that it's, it's easy to talk about, you know, his, you know, where they say the floods are going to be, and how the creek is going to behave, and how the water is going to go. And I, I'm here to tell you that, that it doesn't go like that. It is not predictable. But what is predictable is, is that it does happen. And I, I, I'm very, very concerned about creating containment ponds and things like this, which would easily be submerged in, in, in the flooding. And, and the contaminants and the things that are in those ponds will easily be embraced and swept into, into the water. So, it's, it's, you know, really nice to talk about creating these ponds and things, but I, I'm telling you, this, this is a really, really difficult area. And that's, another thing is, I, I think that we got all excited about some of this, this roadwork that was happening, the, the federal money and stuff that came and the grants to, to, to do this road construction. And I don't want that to be the driver, to have that come in here and push us to something that, that is not wise, and that's not careful, and that's not respectful of, of this place. Now, I know that in previous times, we've talked, we've called this an industrial park and, you know, various things like that. and, uh, you know, various things like that, but I, I want you to understand that, that it's not that. Um, it, it is not part of the 169 corridor at all. It's not visually attached to it. It's not physically attached to it. It's really separate. It's, it's, it's in its own, um, it's in its own special place and what it is connected to is the National Wildlife Refuge, which is right there. And this would easily just become the armpit of the wildlife refuge. Um, and I, it's up to us to be very careful about what, what we do here. This, this is a very, very special place in the county. Um, you know, that we are, uh, we have been asked to, to, to respect the natural area corridors, um, of which, of which this is one. Um, and that what we're planning here, that there's, uh, in the 2040 comp plan, there is designation for the county defined natural area corridors and to take something like this and frankly, just for the benefit of two landowners, to destroy it and, um, and turn it into something that looks like this, which these were comps, um, that were proposed by GMH that were supposed to show how the things like these commercial developments were going to fit and be similar uses, um, to what was around them. And I would like to, uh, disabuse everyone of, of, of how this would fit to the context of the area. It, it is not correct. This is an area of woods and, um, and of, of, of the, of the wetlands and the, and the creek. Um, it, it just can't be treated like something along 169, which, you know, which is fine, that, that it's already set for that. But this is a very, very precious place that we hold in our hands right now and I am, I, I, I want us to understand that. And I, I don't think that, um, that, that the chewing this up and creating this, um, this kind of chopped up commercial activity and industrial business here is, is at all fitting. It does not fit the context and we are required by the comp plan to respect the, the continuity and the context of, of what's there. You know, we're, we're not, we're not given the chance to just, you know, treat it like it's something along the side of the freeway, cause it's not. I, oh, and then, I mean, it's, it's very nice to talk about wildflowers, believe me, I love wildflowers, but we can't ask wildflowers to do the job of, of protecting the soils when the soils are that thin in this area. Uh, and I don't know that it's wise of us to expect the, the, uh, the containment ponds to, to hold up, uh, you know, in, in the flooding. The bridge by 173rd, um, what if that got log jammed as it has in the past? Do you remember when there was a log jam under the bridge and it flooded Valley Green? That came up very fast. Um, these are things that happen. They happen regularly and I'm sorry to say, it, it may be that we're going to be facing this perhaps more often now going forward in the future. Um, you know, uh, the historic flood plain and everything like that. I mean, that, that's one thing, but it doesn't, it does not seem to be keeping up with, with the kinds of flooding that we're now having. It, it, the, the fringe that they call it is, is, is not some teeny little, maybe little bit mucky thing. Where this, this, it, this is a big deal. It comes up fast, uh, it floods fully and it lasts. And for, for us to be setting up this kind of a system and allowing this kind of activity in an area that, that is subject to this, I just, I, I just, I, I, it's, it's, it's inappropriate. I, it is, it is not good stewardship. And then, uh, you know, if, if there are septic tanks here, you know, in the case of a flood, someone is supposed to go and turn that off. And now, if this happens at night, after five o'clock or on a weekend, who's gonna be there to shut it off? You know, uh, the, uh, the, if you, if you're just an employee or you, you know, maybe you own the business or maybe you're just working there, you're, you're not gonna be thinking about this kind of thing and it has to be thought of. This is a very, very special area that has got to be cared for and, um, I, I just, for the benefit of two landowners, it, it's, it's too much, it's too much destruction of, of a very incredibly beautiful jewel in our county. And, and it, and it is, it's too much, um, it's too much risk. So these things have to be, you have to think of this now. Um, I, I, you know, they're, they're, this is much more, well, the fact that they're, that they're willing to give up 14 acres of their land shows you how, how difficult this place is. That this is being shoehorned. This, all of this, 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 this project is just being shoehorned into a, a dangerous and precarious place that, uh, that deserves better. And it deserves, it deserves special treatment and special respect and it, it just, it can't be, it just can't be treated like any other, any other place because it, because it's not, because of the geology and, and because of the context. I, I don't know, I may have had more to say, um, but I, I, I'm very, I'm very serious. There, there is a lot to this and, um, this cannot be done just lightly, cannot be treated like just any old place, like, just can't.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask? I, I may have missed this and by the way, thank you for testifying. Appreciate that. Are you suggesting that part of this is, uh, not in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
I think that the, uh, yes, I am saying that, that this is not in keeping with, um, the designation of the natural area corridors and this, and this is right, this is one of them. Here is, here is, shows where they are. The county has said that we must, um, uh, respect the natural features in Scott County and maintain a network of natural areas. And, uh, to, to, to just go in there and, and rip this up and start putting up, you know, commercial buildings and things like that, that's not what the, the, uh, the guidance of the 2040 comp plan states.
If I could, Mr. Chair, do you understand that the urban reserve is being changed to rural business reserve?
But when you read the, the, the charts of what's allowed here, uh, it's nothing like rural reserve with little fruit stands on the side of the road. We are talking about very large buildings. We're talking about, we're talking about outside sto, outside storage. We are talking about stuff that ends up looking, you know, like, like this, these, these large buildings and, um, uh, things that are completely contrary to the, to the fabric of the area. I, you know, I hope you may have been there. Imagine something just, you know, fields and natural and the, there are sandhill cranes and, uh, it's a lovely area. It, it's, it is, and it should be protected.
Right, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you for your comments also. Would anyone else like to make comment at this time?
Just blank. Um, my name's Zach Perkel. I'll introduce myself a little bit more later. I don't have a ton of commentary on this specific project, but it is a very beautiful natural area that it would be a shame to see it turned into this industrial, commercial land. It, it really is not compatible with what's the land use that is currently in the area. It's all agricultural or nature preserve, as Peggy pointed out. I do have some concerns about the infiltration, infiltration basins. Scott County Natural Resources mentioned that there isn't enough groundwater separation between the bottom of the basin and groundwater, so they wouldn't even classify the structures that they are calling infiltration basins here. They wouldn't even classify them as infiltration basins. They'd just call it a retention pond or detention pond, um, which is concerning to me with the proximity to the creek and just the potential for runoff from the industrial or the activities that will be taking place there and all the impervious surfaces. So that's really all I have specific to this, uh, development.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Greg Wagner, if I could have you come up for a second, just to talk about infiltration soils there.
Oh, sure. Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so, um, I know what, uh, Zach, um, he, he may have been one of the ones that contacted our natural resources planner, Melissa Bachman. Um, she sent us an email today, um, and copied Megan Taska, who's our water resources engineer. Um, so we had a discussion or exchanged some comments on that and what Melissa was not uh, as familiar with, that she doesn't, she's not as familiar with the engineering of stormwater basins. Um, so Megan, who is our engineer, is aware of the groundwater susceptibility. Uh, I think as Peggy's map showed, the whole corridor along the Minnesota River into Shakopee was in that red area, so it's, it is a highly susceptible, uh, area to groundwater contamination or infiltration issues. Um, but our stormwater regulations take that into account. So they need to show a certain amount of, like, it's three feet of separation from groundwater to, uh, the bottom elevation of the infiltration basin, so they, they have to show that. If they can't meet that, then there's different engineering that they need to do to those basins to make that work so that it, uh, so that those infiltration areas work like they're supposed to, um, and don't allow pollutants to infiltrate into the groundwater. So, uh, as I said, Megan and Melissa, we discussed that today. Melissa understands how that system now works. Um, Megan reviews for stormwater management. Uh, she, she reviews for floodplain related concerns, uh, to ensure that the proposal meets county ordinance. And then, uh, ultimately, um, you know, the township engineers here, ultimately those in infiltration and stormwater facilities, um, are dedicated as drainage utility easements to the township and then they, um, they monitor those for any ongoing maintenance that would be needed.
Mr. Chair, Greg, uh, I think he came up and talked about infiltration is fascinating. These soils are extremely fast. It's pretty clean sand out here, it's gonna drain pretty quick. However, designers can put a different mix of soils in there, silty sand mixed with top soil and vegetation to slow the infiltration, to treat the soils better. So I, I think that could be engineered and taken care of appropriately, that not have, uh, to treat this, uh, water appropriately.
Yep, as, as indicated, if they don't have that three feet, then they do need to engineer these a different way.
You could still put different soil in there to slow it up, slow the infiltration up too. I mean, I've seen that done quite a few times. Now, as far as, uh, drainage basins, they're above the 100-year flood, I assume they are.
Yep.
By chance, what is the 100-year flood out here? Elevation, you know?
Yep, so I can go back to what I had on my, here we go. All right, so this information, um, is what FEMA and Minnesota DNR, um, approved in 2021. It's, it's what the engineers use when they design the system. So, um, you can see the, these are, the lines across are the, um, yeah, they're, they're the base flood elevation, so we have 725, 726. So when we get up into this area here, it's in that 725 range.
And all the buildings are at 732 or higher. So they're quite a bit higher.
Thought there was a, oh yeah, here we go. So, um, the 100-year, the flood elevation for the basin is 729. So they, they do elevate those, in this case, it's approximately four feet above what the 100-year would be.
And they can protect those side slopes with different types of material to help on erosion and that from the flooding.
Yep.
Also have a question. What are the surrounding uses right now on, on Valley View there?
Sure. So mainly, uh, this would be to the west. This is the metropolitan, this is mosquito control, yep. So, uh, metropolitan, mosquito control, um, the county owns this building. It's our juvenile alternative facility. And then the county scale facility, the main building and the gun range are on this side, but we also do have, uh, the burn tower, uh, for fire training and, uh, so, so everything out here, um, does have some quasi-governmental industrial use. And that goes to, um, I think some of the comments that we received about, uh, hazardous waste and groundwater. So we do have uses out here. Um, I mean, the county has a burn tower, so we have fuel storage tanks that are out there now. Metropolitan mosquito control has a lot of chemicals at their facility right now. Um, and you look up the corridor to the north, I mean, you follow the creek and the river and we have the Jordan, um, industrial park up in that area, which was done back in the late 90s. The stormwater regulations we have now have been updated several times since this development went in, so what the applicants are looking at today as far as stormwater and groundwater management are, are more stringent than what has been developed previously.
Okay. Another question for you, uh, this application on this property is 67.82 acres. How big is the outlot?
Uh, 37. So the developable area, sorry, so the developable land is approximately 30 acres and the outlot would be 37 acres.
And according to what we heard tonight from the applicant, that that will be permanently placed, that, that outlot will never be developed.
Yes, so, uh, via the plat, there are the wetland boundaries along with the 35-foot buffer, those are placed on the plat. They're dedicated, uh, to the township in drainage utility easements and then that same area is, uh, dedicated to the Scott Watershed Management Organization, which is essentially the county, uh, as a conservation easement. So the township has an easement, the county has an easement over the top. Um, as they search for, uh, natural protection entity to take that over, that would be a third layer that would permanently preserve that area.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Wagner? Um, I know that, uh, our planning director had, uh, some more, uh, comments that they wanted to make.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think for the benefit of the public here, and I want to return back to the city of Jordan's comment letter. Um, if you could bring up the exhibit that the consultant planner showed with the utilities. Um, the planning commission will recall, when we went through the comprehensive plan amendment, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, these two projects. And at a staff level, we committed that when any, um, development comes through and we start seeing some of the plats and plans, we will work with the, the township, the developer and the city of Jordan to make sure that we can set these developments up for eventual, uh, connection to the municipal system. So that was a commitment that staff made and so I just want to return to that because I think there's a spirit of doing that, but when I read the city of Jordan's comment letter, it's kind of the devil's in the details and they bring up a lot of detailed questions, looking for more details. And so I'm just kind of wondering at this point in the public hearing, when in the process is the developers gonna respond to some of those detailed questions? Are you prepared to respond tonight or is that, is there a meetings that are gonna be coming up where we're gonna be sitting down with the city of Jordan, um, to go through some of these detailed questions about, uh, the materials that will be used for the water system? We talked about ownership, so that question I think was answered here tonight. Um, what's the testing and inspection gonna look like? The fire hydrant spacing, the modeling to make sure that the fire department can use these hydrants. So a lot of details, but I'm just kind of wondering when in the process will we get to these real detailed answers to the city of Jordan?
Please start with your name.
Justin Boehm, Messingburn Construction. We have no problem with the city of Jordan as far as if they want hydrants, a lot of, in our past developments, so we put wellhouses in. When you read the fire code, they don't like hydrants sitting out there because then the fire department thinks they can hook up- because then the fire department thinks they can hook up to them. They're municipal, they're not.
Right.
We propose to put one at the end to flush our system with testing. If they want us to test it with them, we do our own testing, bacterial testing, pressure testing on everything that we've done in previous developments. The SDR 11, as far as like a force main, if they want us to pressure test that, we can do that as well. We would put this into their spec, assuming they're going to be the ones that would take it over. So we would just use their cut sheets for their spec to put it in. I mean, we have no problem sharing with them if they have any comment, what they want, if they want to come inspected, I'm totally fine with those. Easy.
That is important because as this goes on over time, you know, today it's not maybe as critical, but 10 years or 15 years down the lines, it gets real critical stuff.
It's best to put it into their spec. They're going to probably own it at some point someday.
Exactly.
So it's, we have no problem with that. As far as hydrants, if they wanted to ever add hydrants, we got leads coming out towards buildings you could easily put a hydrant off of.
Yeah, I want to just kind of play off Mr. Davis's comments. I'm uncomfortable. I'm not, I'm uncomfortable voting on this before the township does. I know there's Fourth of July, but township hasn't voted on this yet. Am I right?
Yeah.
I would prefer that they vote on it first before we do. And I understand you can do motions that say in that, but there is the reality of having them act before we do. So I'm just going to tell my commissioners I'm uneasy about that.
Congressman, we certainly could table because it sounds like there's details here. And the devil is in the details here about getting, you know, this exactly right in, in tabling it to make sure that we have before us a recommendation to go to the commissioners that's going to be complete at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm hearing from the applicant team that they're, they're open to a lot of these comments and that's great to hear. I'm not questioning that. I'm just thinking we have to make sure that the city hears that message so that we don't get another comment letter like this when we go to the board because then we're, we're really going to spin out of control if we don't have a lot of this buttoned up.
So just to tack on to what Justin was just saying. So typically, the details that we're talking about would be addressed within the development agreement. And in terms of their process, you know, if the township takes its action, it would recommend that as part of any condition, that there would be a condition placed that says the specifics of it need to be established within the development agreement. So if there's updates that need to happen to the CD drawings, for example, that there's no permits that are issued until such time that the, the conditions of that development agreement are established. So from that perspective, some of it's, of course, the cart before the horse or what goes for chicken or the egg or whatever analogy you want to use in terms of, if conceptually we don't have agreement with the preliminary plat, then those details are less, you know, or if we tweak things or whatever it might be. So, but as Justin said, I think the intent is that we're doing things to their specification and that we put that within the development agreement and any condition of approval. So I, I think from a timing perspective, there's plenty of time for us to work out those details and make sure that, that the city and the township are on the same page.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Is there any further comments for the commissioners? At this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second, second motion by Commissioner Robinson, second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Discussion or motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I mean, again, I'm going to restate my uneasiness about voting on this before the township does. And I'm at least going to throw out the idea of tabling this to the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I feel comfortable that the township, the county can figure this out before they get in front of the county board with Jordan, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with that aspect as well, recognizing that the septic systems that we now install are dramatically improved from what they were previously. Floodplain control is improved. The property is part of the comprehensive plan. It's a business park, been so designated. I think business parks can and have consistently protected waterways, wetlands, streams, and creeks. And we see that in a variety of different communities throughout our Scott County. We have, we have streams overflowing business parks that have trout in them and they survive. And in those business parks, there are camp routes. So, I mean, this can flourish with proper control. And I think what I've seen so far with regard to the, the hookups that the developer is intending to do, to meet, be compatible when the city decides and when, if, when and if they decide to come in and do the hookups, it will, it will work. So I would proceed, I would pursue them to proceed with this vote.
Mr. Chairman, what is the timeline on this?
I'll turn to Mr. Davis for that, or perhaps Mr. Wagner.
Just generically, overall, what's the timeline?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Hentges. So the county would have until, I believe, I mean, technically by our 60-day, 120-day timeline, we would have until like October to take action on it. The township meets on Thursday night. They also, I believe, meet August 1st. So they'll meet again August 1st. So depending what they do, if they make a recommendation on Thursday, the township attorney would draft a development agreement that would be circulated to county staff, the developer. Obviously, the township and their engineer would review that. That would need to be agreed to before this would be scheduled for county board. So we have no plan at this point. We don't have a, an agenda that we're scheduling for county board at this point. There's still the development stuff, the city of Jordan items that, you know, Brad and the applicant just talked about that we would want buttoned up before this would get scheduled for county board.
But it, it sounds like you're going to, you have a plan to move forward from this point on, subject to the township approval, but not waiting for it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hentges. So as we do in the staff report, staff provides a recommendation, but we also list out conditions that are items that have not been fully addressed. In this case, one of those would be drafting of a development agreement, but also getting finalized approved plans. It's subject to the township recommendation and any comments that they or their engineer would have. And we could, we could add on, I think, we could add on a condition that the developer would meet or review their plans with the city of Jordan as a condition prior to county board as well.
Commissioner Pika, did you want to?
Yeah, I, from what I understand, the township, they kind of brought this whole thing here, are, I mean, in tune with it. And, you know, that's kind of why we're here is because they presented this and, you know, with all the stipulations, there's a lot of them here, so. My take.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify one more point. So as I said, the township meets on Thursday, would likely make a recommendation. Their township attorney would draft the development agreement, but the township would also have to officially, officially act on that, which likely would be August.
Following me.
So they would officially endorse or approve that agreement. And then once they do, it gets forwarded to the county board, so.
Okay. Any further questions or at this point? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning preliminary plat and final plat of Sand Creek Business Park consisting of seven lots and one outlot and 67.82 acres. Noting this recommendation is subject to condition of approval listed in the staff report to be satisfied prior to county board consideration of the plan, and also at a condition that the developer slash township meet with the city to go through and make sure on those utilities things are squared away.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion by Commissioner Hoover, second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? Hearing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Hey, our next item this evening is number 2024-12, request to approve a rezoning of 97.13 acres from urban residential or urban business reserve, UVR, to rural business reserve, RBR, and preliminary plat of Valley View Industrial Park consisting of seven lots and two outlots and 97.13 acres. JMH Land Development Company LLC, applicant, and Jordan Gravel LLC, property owner in section eight and 17 of Sand Creek Township. And Mr. Hall, you making the staff report? Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The subject property is located in sections eight and 17 of Sand Creek Township. And it is currently zoned UVR. The site has frontage on Valley View Drive along the northwestern side of the parcels. And it also has Sand Creek, DNR Protective Water Course, running here along the southeast side of the parcels. Much of the property is open agricultural land with areas of wetland and floodplain on it as well in the lower areas of the site. This 97.13 acre property was part of the recent comprehensive plan amendment request submitted by Sand Creek to re-guide the properties along Valley View Drive corridor to urban, from urban business reserve to rural business reserve. And that amendment was approved in April of this year. And so that does allow this property owner and adjacent property owners as well to rezone to RBR, to make application for that. And as proposed, the plat and the submitted grading plans, they showed the RBR lot standards and conceptual building pads that meet, that they meet required structure setbacks. And the lots generally range, they range between approximately three acres and nine acres. And the minimum lot size in this district is two and a half, so they are meeting that minimum. On the, in the plan set, the developer shows areas that would be used as parking areas. They show areas for the building pads within the, within the setbacks. They also show areas that could be used for outdoor storage. Now, this is a, in a sense, is conceptual at this point. So the building site, it could be located, as long as it's meeting setbacks, it could be located in some other areas here within the site. But this is how the developer and the applicant is showing that this would meet the preliminary plat standards and the standards of the RBR district. And now, there will be site-specific development plans when these sites would develop individually. So on these sites, there could be administrative or conditional use permit applications. So for example, if it was a indoor storage facility, that's an administrative permit. If it is a contractor yard for a landscaper or something like that, that would be a conditional use permit and would come before this board. But in either of those circumstances, it would be reviewed by our engineering staff. It would get reviewed for site-specific issues such as the landscaping, if any screening is required, stormwater, architectural standards, and all of those requirements. Now, the only access to these lots is from Valley View Drive, and that is currently a gravel section of Township roadway. And as Greg and Mr. Sandy noted earlier, there are improvements planned for Valley View Drive and 173rd and Jordan Avenue. And the developer is developer and this applicant and the neighboring developer and the township are communicating and cooperating in that. The infrastructure improvements, again, are going to be noted in the developer's agreement. Any kind of cost sharing would be noted in the developer's agreement. One thing about this property, and I believe that the applicant will speak more to this, is that over on lot two, there may be some implications from the new alignment of Valley View Drive crossing the railroad tracks. The applicant can speak more to that, but it may have some implications on setbacks and some different changes that may be needed in that part of the property. The septic drain field sites, as you note here, they aren't located on the front of the property. So that would be to allow for easier access to city utilities when city utilities would be extended through this corridor. So that the buildings already have their connection coming out the front of the building toward the, toward the roadway. And the applicant can speak more to that as well and respond more to the city's recent letter on that. And the developer has also prepared a resource management plan to address the site grading, erosion control, stormwater management. Under this plan, there are two large stormwater basins just downhill from the sites, from the developable side of the, of the properties. And the system is designed to accommodate the impervious surface. These properties would be able to have a maximum 75% impervious surface between the, the structures and any kind of paved or gravel surfaces. And so the system is designed to accommodate that and, and to safely allow that stormwater to percolate into the, into the ground. And the Scott County Natural Resources Department has created a memo that was attached to the staff report where they have some different conditions. There is an updated plan, but the natural resources staff has not had a chance yet to review the plan set that was provided just last week here. The floodplain considerations have been reviewed by the Scott Watershed Management Organization. And the WMO noted some things that need to be addressed. They noted that all the proposed buildings must be located above the 730 contour. And so that is on the site, comes through, through this area here. And so they would like the structures to be located all behind that. And another item that they, they noted that the applicant is, is working on is that all the areas need to be at least one foot above the base flood elevation. And it appears that they're largely meeting that, but there are some areas that could be elevated a little higher in that. And due to the Fourth of July holiday, as Greg mentioned, we do not have township comment yet. Of course, we do have Mr. Sandy and the township engineer here to make any kind of comments on the, on the request. And the applicant, Mr. Hentges, and also Mark Sonstegard from JMH Land Development is here tonight. I believe he does have some items that he would like to note.
Okay.
To the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions before Mr. Hentges comes up from the commissioners? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. My name is Mark Sonstegard. I'm with JMH Land. We've been working on this site for quite a while, as you know. We've spent time with the township and we've spent time with county staff. Once we, the comp plan amendments were taken, were approved, we started working with staff and we started working with the Scott County Watershed on our site design. And it's similar to what you've seen in the past, but this is the rendering of where we are today. we are today. So just, what's the next slide? There we go. Just, this is a real high-level look at the property. The property is a total of 97.13 acres. As we plaid it, Valley View Drive will finally become its own right-of-way, and that'll be 3.5 acres. Our development area for lots is 37.19 acres. The pond area, as you can see, it will be an outlot that'll be 9.62 acres. And then the remaining of the property, which for us we'll call Lot B, is 47.27 acres. Just a couple of comments about the outlot. The, our plans for the outlot in the future, and as you can see in some of the comments from staff, is there's not many wetlands in that outlot area. I'm just going to swing forward here quick. So this is the wetland area that's associated in the outlot B, which is different than the previous development that you saw, that all the floodplain area was basically also all wetland. This particular outlot B, we've got, you know, a little over two acres of wetland, and then Sand Creek flows through it. One of the longer-range goals, and we plan to hang on to Lot B after development, is to apply for some wetland banking in this area, which is something that has been encouraged from Scott County staff. So this area is normally, during normal years and dry years, a lot of this is farmed. Obviously, during this year, if you're out there, it's underwater because of the floodplain. So that's our, our future use for Lot B, and then ultimately, similar to the other development, we would look for some type, put a conservation easement over it, and then it would just became, become, or stay natural. Again, as we were designing the site, we sat with Nathan, or Mr. Hall and staff, and we, you know, looked into the, or we looked at the RBR district and the zoning and looked at the minimum areas, minimum lot widths, minimum setbacks. We did a couple alterations with concept planning with staff. So we did spend quite a bit of time laying this particular site plan out. To address some of the city's concerns, and we can work with them a little bit further, but as you can see from this site plan, we put all the septics up close to the road. And we put our, you know, more of our green space up towards the road. So in our eyes, that's the corridor for future water mains, future sewers and things like that. So there's space to put it in, and also the infrastructure for individual homes or individual buildings would flow towards Valley View Road. So that would make it easier for a future hookup. We'd have to sit down with city staff, but we don't know what water mains, what looping, anything like that. All we can really do at this time is say, here's your corridor. It's, it's, it's ready for you, and all our homes are ready, their sewers are flowing towards the septic. So that's been so far our approach with working with the city and making sure in the future, if the city were to run water and sewer up and down Valley View, they've got a corridor to do it in. And there wouldn't be any significant large improvements for any of our tenants. So as we've been working with the Sand Creek Township, we've been aware of a number of off-site improvements that would need to go with this. We're aware of all their applications for grants, and we supported those. Recently, we were given a couple of concept plans for how the Valley View would have a new intersection over the railroad. And this is, what I have in yellow is what Mr. Sandy mentioned, is the 20, 25 mile an hour S curve. So this is how it would impact our site. So as you can see, our Lot 2, we'd have to redesign, septics need to be further away. But again, with us designing the site with everything away from Valley View, we've left room here for these future changes or even corridor, street improvements for the area. So that's, with Mr. Hall had talked about, this is, it works just fine. This is the concept plan that Township's currently working with, with the county and
Mr. Sonstegard, based on this different alignment, it would likely change maybe some of your lot lines and driveway connections on the Valley View?
Yes.
I'm guessing, and so it would alter the whole preliminary plat to some point?
Right. Again, as we design the site, I can step back a little bit. We, you know, this is our concept. This is what we've gone out to market with to try to show. Here, we've got areas where you can have a nine-acre lot, or you can get closer to two and a half or three-acre lot. And then here, it shows how it works as they're all sold in here. Yeah, as we fine-tune this, we'll see some lot lines move around, maybe Lot 1 and Block 1 become one lot, and they work together that way. Again, one of the things we did do with this site plan is per the zoning, each lot can have up to 75% impervious surface. So we assume that throughout the project, and that's how we size all our pondings. So the ponding is already, will be built ahead of time to maximize our, so it can handle impervious surface that meets the maximum requirements.
Mr. Chair.
Chris Pika.
See, question, does, like, the neighboring people, like Mary Highland, does she, is she aware of that new configuration of Valley View Drive?
I'll let Matt, our, the township engineer, mention that. This is some...
It looks like it's taken quite a chunk out there, huh?
And if I'm off, Matt, you want to answer it?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Matt Storl with Stan Tech. I'm the Township's engineer. And we have, we haven't yet talked with the two neighboring residences. We, is there a way to, how do I switch this over to the GIS? I know I can screw it up if I try. Perfect. Thank you. So if we look here, so we get down to this crossing, the, the shift that we're looking to make would put the crossing such, you know, that it's, it's roughly 100 feet to the northeast, and the, the curve would be contained generally within this triangle parcel. This parcel is actually owned by the Minnesota Land Trust, and they're in the, you know, they, they acquire properties and, and do whatever work it is they do before it's transferred to Fish and Wildlife. So they have an additional parcel here, and then we get back to the, I believe this one's Fish and Wildlife. Yeah. So they had, they had acquired these two parcels here, here and here. And then we had a preliminary conversation with them about if they would be willing to work with us to put the, the road alignment over here now. And, you know, they, they were open to that. So then with that, the, the second piece of that equation was, will the railroad be open to us shifting that crossing? The railroad can be an, an interesting conversation piece some days, I'm sure you're very aware. And we have just recently gotten word that at a preliminary level, they're also open to this. So there are quite a few moving puzzle pieces. We didn't think it made a lot of sense to talk to the, to the neighbors just yet until we kind of had that preliminary idea. But with that, we would obviously be affecting the driveway for this parcel here, but not actually needing any right-of-way. And then with, I believe this is...
That one's gone. That's the one with the fish bar.
Oh, we definitely won't be affecting them then. All right. And then the, the property just to the west, I believe that's the Shank property. Yeah, the Shank property, the, the biggest reason to shift that road to the northeast a little bit was to get the road alignment a little further away from their home and structures. So we're trying to be accommodating to, to them and making things a little, a little less obtrusive to them, less right-of-way that we might need from them. So that was the, the purpose of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. The last item I want to discuss is, you know, where all this property in the floodplain works, the elevation of our floodplain is around that 730 elevation. That's the 100-year elevation, and that's the blue line that you see drawn on here as it exists today. What we proposed and what we've met with Scott County and Scott County Watershed is, is the filling of the, the floodplain area in Lots 1 and 2. We would, and then with that, we would go forward through the grading permit process. That's where we get the permit to fill it, and then we would complete a letter of map revision for FEMA, so that these folks, their lots and their outdoor storage would be outside the floodplain. Now, the reason we picked this area and the reason we went forward with this, and this is what we've been working on with, with Watershed staff, is if, right now, the floodplain through our site, there's the, there's the floodway, and then there's the fringe. What we're proposing to fill would be in the fringe area. And one of the things in the Scott County zoning ordinance talks about regulations and criteria for filling portions of the floodplain, and this fringe area meets those criterias. Also, it meets those criterias in such a way that we ran, the DNR has their model for the whole creek for watching flooding. What we did is our engineers got a hold of, or got the model, and what, we ran the model for the site, and it lines up just like how the FEMA floodplain maps work. But then we, we reran the model with the filling of that fringe area, and basically that model showed a no rise in the creek or the floodplain area. So that's why we're comfortable working on this, and we're still working with staff. Scott County Watershed sees that, they're working with us on that, but they're determining is should, even though there is no rise, she's looking for maybe a one-to-one replacement of the volume of the fill that we're putting in there, where we would excavate some other areas of the site where that water could go.
Can I just ask, given what's happened, again, in the last month or three or four weeks and looking at this map, where is the, the water this year? Is it in the fringe?
It is in the fringe, but it is, we were out there, and I was out there with staff. It's not all the way into the fringe. It hasn't even, it hasn't reached that 730 elevation yet. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, so yes, it is, the water has gotten up into the fringe area. I suppose, oh, you can't see. So the water has gotten up into this area right here, and then it's around this high point, and then it's like that.
And while you're doing that, the properties you're proposing to build, can you point those out?
The, the fill area?
Yeah.
It would be this area right here, and a little bit right there. And when I, I was, and the fill, we're, to bring it up and out of the floodplain, we're talking two feet, four feet, and then maybe six feet right along the edge. So we're not, it's not 12 feet of fill. It's, it's, it's a pretty minor adjustment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, regarding filling in the floodplain, you said the models showed that it's not really increasing the flooding much. You might be able to compensate by digging some areas out, outside of the fringe area to compensate that?
Actually, the model showed a no rise at all.
Not at all.
Because it was so, you know, again, it's the flow, the floodway, and then you have the fringe. Fringe is where it backs up. There's no real flow in the, the fringe area. So as you filled that area, the model showed, you know, no rise anywhere along the whole corridor. But we're, we're still working with Scott County Watershed, and Vanessa Strong is still looking at the idea, and in her recent memo, she mentioned doing some one-to-one replacement, which would be, we would excavate other areas or even other areas within the floodplain to create volume storage of the fringe.
That's what I meant, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, which we're willing to do. So again, we're happy to answer any questions you have, and you know the history of the project.
Yeah, let me just ask a general one again, and I'm sure it's in the report, but to get it on, what will go there? You're talking about these, yeah, go back to that one.
Okay.
What's in those squares? I mean, what kind of businesses? It's going to be Rural Business Reserve? What does that mean?
Right now, we've got an automotive shop that does conversions. I'll, I'll stick with that, both old and, and new vehicles, but they, they take them, convert them, and then they send them out. We have another, or two general contracting companies that are looking for a space. One's kind of interesting, they do saunas for commercial buildings, but this would be their setup place and do some of their setup stuff. And then we've got a small manufacturing facility that's interested in coming in here and doing some warehouse storage. So that's, so I've got, you know, automotive, and then construction, and then a little bit of manufacturing.
And storage.
And storage, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions at this time?
Thank you.
I'll certainly stand by for any questions, Mr. Chair, that the...
No, any questions for Mr. Hall right up there. Okay, I don't see any, so thanks very much. This is a pub hearing. If you'd like to come up to the podium, there's a sign-up sheet, and please start with your name, if you'd like to make some comments regarding this application.
How do we do the camera thing again?
Mr. Hall will help you set that up so we can see them as well.
Okay. Where is it? Oh, there it is. Okay, cool, found it, okay.
If you could start with your name.
Yeah, yeah. My name's Zach Perkel, so I, just a little introduction. I'm a resident of Scott County. I live in Chocopee now. As a kid, I grew up at Mary and Larry Shank's farm, riding horses and doing various activities. Like every weekend, we were out at the, the farm, and I kept coming back to enjoy the natural beauty of that area. And now I'm in the process of purchasing the 58-acre parcel that they own that is directly to the south, I guess, of the Hentges development. And so I have a lot of concerns about what the filling of the floodplain, mainly what that's going to do to our property and how that's going to generally just affect...
and how that's gonna generally just affect the whole environment there. I do have a couple of pictures, I don't know if I can show of the flooding. I know that they talked about the modeling and the scientific aspect of it, but I do have some pictures that I would like to show.
We, we'll be able to see them if you put them down there.
Okay, if I put them here. Well, that, it's, so this is looking north. This would be looking northeast, um, at, from the, oh, this is another, I'll just orient ourselves here. I know that they have, they showed the flood fringe as well. But looking from approximately this point here to the northeast is this view. And that's just how much of their field, it's kind of low quality. But that's the, uh, flooding currently, or at least a couple of weeks ago.
When did you take that, do you know?
What's that?
When did you take that picture?
I believe that was on the, do you remember? This is the 26th.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple more here that I can check out as well. These are two pictures showing, oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I can get that over here a little bit better. Um, this picture here would be taken from the, yeah, this driveway here looking to the, generally to the east, I guess. So looking into, that, that's all the, the wooded area along the back of their property. This is just another picture of the flooding, kind of looking from that same perspective of the first one we might have. I think I have another one here somewhere. But there is a lot of water out there right now. Here's another one. Just a, really a ton of water where they are planning to do a lot of this development, which is concerning. And I know that there's regulations and all that kind of engineering that goes into that. But just the amount of the structures that are in the flood fringe and the effect that that's going to have on neighboring properties downstream and, uh, just in general is very, very concerning to me. Let me see, if I have a few just general comments about the rezoning. As I said for the last one, I, I really think that it is an incompatible use of this land. They talked about, you know, looking farther up 169, there is industrial development. But in this direct region, there is really nothing like that. We, we do have the municipal, the, the county has some stuff going on, but there's nothing industrial, no manufacturing, no warehousing. Really pretty limited traffic right now. So that, that change kind of frightens me and startles me. I understand that it's gone through the comp plan amendment and all that kind of stuff that you guys have all done. But it, it just seems really, it seems like a, an intense change in land use to me. So that's a concern I have just directly to the rezoning. As far as conforming to the performance standards of the ordinance, they talk about that in the staff report. And it says that it complies with the RBR performance standards. There is also the floodplain district and the shoreland district. I, as I understand, that overlays those districts. And I, based on the reading that I've done with my limited knowledge of the zoning ordinances, it doesn't seem like those would fit the restrictions or the performance standards set for those districts. I know you guys obviously know that code a lot better than I do, but they do talk about all lots being created in any subdivision of a floodplain district must be able to contain a building site above the regulatory flood protection elevation. I talked with Scott County Natural Resources this morning and they're still determining whether or not lots one and two are going to be a feasible, feasible to keep those building sites out of the flood fringe with the amount of fill that is allowed. And just with the restrictions, setback restrictions and not building over the septic. So those are concerns I have as far as that goes. I don't think that this development is reasonably safe from flooding as, as outlined in the district standards for that floodplain district. And I'm very concerned that it will, the floodplain developments will affect the hydraulic capacity of the channel and the adjoining floodplain and obviously other land all around there. Let me see what else I have. I'm obviously concerned about runoff, different concerns regarding the groundwater and managing our natural resources here. But I, I'll continue on. Yeah, I guess in my opinion, it's, the land is unsuitable to be developed as an industrial park. That's what I feel. And based on the way I've read the, interpreted the zoning ordinance, that's the conclusion I've come to, but that's for you guys to decide. I think that it'll create a deterrence to existing land use for a number of reasons, um, including the visual and noise pollution that it's going to bring, increased traffic. I know that they're talking about all that stuff with redoing the road and bringing a lot more traffic through there. But this is going to create even more than, more traffic than paving a road will do. I, I'm not sure that it's feasible and I don't know what I, in, in, from what I've seen in the plans, I don't see it being feasible to fill and make all these structures safe in the floodplain the way that they are now. And it doesn't seem like Scott County Natural Resources, they said that plan was incomplete. I know that they've been working with Nate and Brad and everyone else here. But they have a lot of concerns, it sounded like too, with being able to bring everything out of the floodplain. And then they were talking about a two-to-one compensatory storage. Is what Natural Resources told me. I know that they had talked about a one-to-one, um, compensatory storage. Maybe I misunderstood, but I'm wondering where all that soil is going to be brought out from. And what that's going to do to the areas that they've designated as outlots. And if they're going to end up turning all those into a giant pond or what all is going to happen there. I believe that the majority of my comments, I'm also concerned about whatever activities are happening on the site now. I know that Nathan mentioned in the plan that there was concerns of mining going on. I do have just a quick snip of the overlay. And there's definitely excavator working with gravel going all around, um, on that site. I don't know what is taking place there, but I know there's a lot of gravel trucks coming in and out of that facility or that property. And that's concerning. I don't know if that's applicable here specifically, but that's a concern I have. I believe that's the majority of the commentary I have, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Do I need to put my name on this just to clarify?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me just do that really quick.
Okay, and then if you could start with your name.
Yeah, I'll introduce myself. Hi.
Hi.
My name is Katie Sawyer. I have been a Shakopee resident my whole life. And as Zach mentioned, we are currently exploring purchasing the parcel of land directly south of this, uh, proposed development from Mary and Larry, where we hope to build our home. I don't know if Zach mentioned that, but that is our intended use in exploring this is we would like to live out there. I will just say, we're drawn to living out there right now due to the area. I love the refuge there. I work a job in the city. I have a lot of bad days. I'm an auditor. People hate me at my job, I'll be honest. It is a tough job to deliver bad news every single day. And one of my favorite things about that area is the quiet you get out there, the lack of traffic. I understand it's been reguided. My understanding is, is we could re-guide really anything we wanted to if somebody put enough time into it. So my stance is it's been reguided to potentially be rural business reserve. But is that really the best use? I have a number of concerns about that. As I said, we're really hoping to make that our home. I've lived in Scott County my whole life. I love it here. I went to school up at the University of Minnesota Duluth. And I've seen a number of issues that Duluth is having. It's in the, even national news about a housing crisis they're facing largely due to the fact that Duluth was mainly industrial for most of its history. It's a blue collar working town. And as industry has moved out and they've modernized, there's a lot of issues of lack of buildable space in the city due to contamination from industrial parks that were built at a time. And so when I see this happening, I'm concerned. But what's happening in Scott County and the growth here and being able to support future residential growth? Businesses are great, but people need a place to live. Everyone deserves to have a home and I would love to make this my home. But honestly, it gives me pause when I think that my neighbor could be a giant industrial park. It could be automotive, it could be landscaping, it could be lumber yards. These are things that are loud there, things that pollute despite best intentions. I have concerns about that. I have a number of concerns about paving Valley View Drive. There's been talks about paving Valley View Drive for probably close to 10 years. Nothing has happened yet. We haven't really seen any progress made. They've received the grant money. We still haven't really had it planned. As, um, some of the other adjacent landowners who are here can tell you, they have not been approached about changes made to Valley View. We were absolutely shocked to see that, uh, proposed change to the railroad crossing up on the screen because none of us have been consulted. We have not seen that. We have heard that there were proposed plans, we have not seen them. So to me, this feels very premature to bring something like this forward without consulting neighboring people that it will impact. So I have a number of concerns about Valley View Drive. It seems that this has just kind of been thrown together. I have a number of concerns related to that. I have concerns about what an industrial park is going to do to property values to everyone else who lives on Valley View. You've seen a lot of talk about what goes up north on Valley View along 169. But what we haven't talked about is what's going south on Valley View towards the city of Jordan. It is all houses. It is people that live out there that is their home. Industrial parks hurt property values. They deter people from wanting to live there. When we're thinking about what the future of this area needs, what the city of Jordan needs and what Sand Creek Township needs, I think it needs people that are excited to live there, who want to be there and who want to be good stewards of the land. And I'm concerned about what an industrial park is going to do to those people as a deterrent and also to property values of people looking to potentially move into the area. And I think that's the extent of my concerns.
Thank you very much.
So I will sign in here. Okay. I don't know where exactly, I don't have anything to show, but I want to talk. My name is Mary Shank. My husband and I, Larry, live on, across the road, right where the road and the railroad tracks go across the road at that curve that I just learned tonight that they were going to take a piece of property there. Right there. Okay, so this is our property here. This piece right here.
Still can't see it.
It's pretty old. Oh, what do we got? We got a beautiful picture of flowers.
Now we can see it.
Okay, so this is our property right here. Okay, this piece here. And currently, we own this road here that goes down. Here, we want to move it. I don't know how to move that picture up, no. Oh, you just got to make it smaller. Okay.
This property right here.
Correct. So this little skinny area here, this is our road back to the 60 acres that we own here. And which is, we can take a canoe out there right now because it's all underwater. I just wanted to mention that right about here on the edges of the berm, a couple of years ago, the flood came in and burst that berm out. And the water rushed over onto Henshaw's property and filled it all up. And so a couple of years it took to fill that, replace that berm, put that berm back in, um, because it's above the water line and we like to ride our horses down it and take the tractor down there, make trails, et cetera. But this year, it bursts through that berm again. There's like a waterfall because the water runs so strong when it floods and it fills so fast overnight. It was gone and everything was underwater. The water comes up one day, the next day it's totally flooded. It's about six feet deep on our side of the property. I don't know how deep it is over on, on the other side over here. But right along here is the deepest area, right here. And the water flow runs from the creek across our property here over onto Henshaw's and then it comes out down over by 169. The current is so strong, you can't, you can't even take a boat in it because it'll just take you right away. That's all I wanted to say. Can't control nature.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Peggy Jo Denette and I've already signed in. I just don't think that we're understanding enough how high the water is. And I don't know how to show it. It, I mean, I talked to Vanessa Strong today and she, she feels that lot one is, is already compromised. And then if we're talking about, uh, the S curve taking more out of lot two, again, it just seems that we're trying to push something onto an area that it's not, uh, doesn't make sense to, to, to use in this way. And people haven't mentioned, there's a nursing home down at, at the end of the road and a lot of the residents, um, come with their walkers and their little scooters and things. And the juvenile facility is there and there's a lot of foot traffic that, uh, people that walk along there as well. Oh, and the new S curve. I, I don't see how that's any easier to negotiate than the other way. It's still a terribly sharp curve. Someone died there, you know, uh, about a year ago. A young, a young, some young kids were driving around and they, they went off the road and one of the kids was thrown into the ditch and killed right there. Uh, it is a very dangerous place. I don't, the S curve that they're talking about does not appear to me to be much of a, of an improvement at all in terms of the danger. And then another thing is the time between reliance on septic systems and any city services may be many years, given how slowly this progresses. So, uh, remember that, that we may be relying on these septic for, for a long, long time. And once they flood, as we can see, they're flooded for days and days and days and days. What are those businesses going to do, uh, without bathroom services for that length of time? I, I, I would suggest we do something completely different with this thing altogether. The, the Menawapetun Sioux, uh, folks are interested in prairie and wetland restoration. The Minnesota Valley Lands LLC, uh, which helped facilitate the purchase of that piece right across the road. Maybe that's a better use for something like this. Maybe there'd be one little, a couple little residential spots on the top of the crest of the land that stays dry. Yeah, I just, I, I just think this is, we've been trying for a long, long time to figure out what we can do with this place. And I, I just, um, I think we're off the track. So, there we go.
Thank you very much for your comments. Would anyone else like to make comment on this application at this time? This time I'll obtain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, could I ask, uh, Son Sevier to come up and answer a few questions here? Again, you're going to raise grade in lots one and two, just get above the floodplain, hundred year flood. You're only raising grade two, three, four feet maybe at the most. Septic lines are going to be kept above the hundred year flood, I assume.
They're all outside the hundred year flood.
And above, the, the septic lines for the, uh, septic field will be above the hundred year flood.
Correct.
And, and the, I assume the tanks, you can do things with the tanks to tie them down if you had to.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, we didn't design all the, you know, all the, all the septic and everything is, again, up against Valley View, which is out of.
Higher elevation.
Right. And then, um, a couple of comments were made about shoreline overlay. And then a couple comments were made about Shoreland Overlay District. Sand Creek does have a Shoreland Overlay District, which I believe is 700 feet, which is all in that Outlot B. So the Shoreland Overlay District requirements are, don't even get up to our Outlot A, they're that far away. I did mistakenly say, when we were working with the county, or the Vanessa Strong, about a mitigation, it is, it is two to one, not one to one. So I'm, that was my mistake. Yeah, so, if you have any other questions, I can add.
Sure, thank you.
I have a quick question for the applicant, Mr. Sansagard.
Yeah, related to Lot Number 7. Is there any design considerations if in the future, access to the parcel just to the north, which is currently a landlocked parcel, could gain access through Lot 7? Has there been any consideration or discussion, or just any design that would allow that in the future if it needed to?
Yes, that landowner has approached us, and it would be a private access driveway that would share with Lot 7.
Looking with the septic locations, that wouldn't be a, that would prohibit where you could get a driveway up to that parcel, it appears.
Yeah, depending on where that individual had talked about possibly hugging the southern property line, and then coming in through this way and up that way. Our septics are down here. They also can be up here, depending on where we are with our final plans.
Thank you.
But yeah, these are the areas that we tested a number of months ago.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. This time we all obtain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hensh, does I have a second? Second, Commissioner Pika. Favor vote, aye. You obtain a motion or discussion at this time?
Mr. Chair, I have the same problem with this one that I did the last one. I will submit that I listened pretty closely to developer, things that he intends to do in terms of filling in. There's a lot of water here, and there's, if the river floods again, this is always going to be a site that's in peril. But I did pay close attention, and you must know that, and so I'm somewhat encouraged that you're taking some steps to fill in the land. I'm also, this is a little different, because the outlot is never going to be bought. That's just going to stay the way it is, and it's going to be natural land. But I will tell you that, that if you build here and everything, you're always going to, even if you fill in, you're always going to have the difficulty or face the possibility of an overflow. So, all right, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Any other comments at this time?
Firstly, I'm uncomfortable with the fringe, filling in the fringe area in the flood plain, and that it's not resolved, it's a proposal to do that. And I don't know, I'm just uncomfortable with that. That's my comfort, I mean, just, is, on this particular lot, or this particular site, that's, that has me uncomfortable about those two lots, and there's a unresolved issue with the road issue on front, which is going to push the lots to a different configuration than we're looking at right now. And I would feel more comfortable if those issues were resolved before we made a recommendation at this time. That's where I sit.
I drove out there, and drove around, there's water everywhere. And it just seems like, I've got concerns about those first two lots. I've got concerns about filling in with the fill, and it's kind of a lot of, we're going to do this, and then we're going to hope for this or that. I think we need more information before we should put something like this through. I really do. I think, right now, time is our friend.
Mr. Chair, it's not uncommon to fill areas to get up out of the 100 year flood. You don't want to have a building in a parking lot in flooding conditions. So it's common practice to bring it up. The big thing is storage, is there enough storage in the area so you don't flood other areas? But it sounds like they modeled it. There's hydro, hydrological ways of modeling to show that it's not flooding other areas. So I feel comfortable with the overall development, with the raising of the grade enough to get out of the 100 year flood.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I was happy to see that the septics were put in the front instead of behind. That was my biggest hangup from day one on that, and I think that was a good move. And as far as the flooding there, I agree, there's a big water problem there. I've never seen it. I lived here all my life in that kind of area. But yeah, a 100 year flood, now I don't know where we were this last couple weeks. Was it 100 year? Or, I don't know who could answer that here.
It depends on where you're at exactly.
But was it a 100 year flood in that creek? Now, this ain't the river now, we got to understand, this is the creek, Sand Creek. Was it a 100 year flood?
It happens every 100 years.
Right. Does it come that high?
The thing about it this year is, it's unusual to have high water at this time, because normally our floods come from snow melt, and it's snow melt, and this is unusual. At my house in Scott County, in June, we had 12.27 inches. So that's a lot of water, that's a lot of water to come out, and so, and, you know, so it can flood. I lived in a flood plain at a house for a long time, and everything in the flood plain is elevation. You know, you know, it's, it is 100% determined by elevation. And so when you start looking at these things, and seeing where the water's flowing and stuff, that's, you know, that's how it all goes. And flood plains, because of their, in river basins, are all tributary. So it all comes from everything that's coming down the line. So I just, I guess, I just think that that's my concerns right now. That's why I'm sitting at this right now, and I would like to have more comfort with it. That's, that's where I sit.
Mr. Chair, as far as Sand Creek, I assume Sand Creek is kind of being backed up a little bit from the river, because the river's so high. Well, it's affecting it to some degree right now.
Well, having, did you want to, okay, you don't have to. But I'd like a, a motion or some action at this point to have some direction here.
Okay, Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning 97.13 acres from Urban Business Reserve, UBR, to Rural Business Reserve, RVR, and the preliminary plat of Valley View Industrial Park consisting of seven lots and two outlots and 97.13 acres, noting that this recommendation is subject to the issues of approval listed in the staff report to be satisfied prior to county board consideration of the plat.
I have a motion by Commissioner, or second by Commissioner Watson. And when I call for the vote, I'd like the secretary to call by names. That'd be all right. Okay, is there any discussion before I call for a vote on this?
Okay. At this time, I'll call for a vote on the motion for the commission. Pika? I'd like to stand, but, uh, here.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
The ma, the motion passes on four to three.
No, it's three to three.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion does not, the motion fails. So what we have is a tie.
Excuse me, I thought we had seven here.
Motion fails.
If we can't, if we can't, I, is there another motion that someone would like to make at this time? Commissioners, is there a way forward here, I guess, for us at this point?
Mr. Check, I'd just say, Sand Creek still has something to say. We're going to have a meeting. Before we get together, there's something's going to happen out there. And so there may be some more information that we have at the next meeting, that we don't have now.
Wait, are you saying you'd be amenable to tabling it to the next meeting?
I'm not saying that, I'm just pointing out that there, that.
I think it failed, what it said.
Well, we can stand with the motion of not being able to make a recommendation to go forward.
Mr. Chairman, are we, are we hung up on Lot 1 and 2? Is that what we're hung up on here?
Well, primarily, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question? This fails right now. Can, at the next meeting, can we bring, can we bring something else up? If we don't table this, if we just let it sit, can we still at the next meeting?
I don't believe so, no. I think your motion would stand, and we would just advance it to the county board that you were split.
Yeah, with the split.
It would go to the county board.
Okay. We'll go to the county board regardless, it will just go without a recommendation from the planning commission.
All right. Would it, so, this group here, if we table it for the next meeting, and give more information from Sand Creek and so forth?
I think it.
Yes. I think, I think, I would be more amenable to that, to tabling it, rather than, and just because, I don't know, I, my questions on the two lots there are not resolved, and were not resolved by the applicant, and not resolved by the information that I have in front of me now.
And Sand Creek isn't going to resolve it if they just say yes. So maybe we just need a lot, table it for more information. I'm concerned about the water, I'm concerned about the lots. I'm concerned about whether or not this thing belongs here. How's that for blunt? Table it, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Or table it and deny it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
I would suggest, my recommendation, my motion is to table the, this particular, I forget how we want to reword it, but it's the 97.13 acres from Urban Business Reserve, a rural business reserve pending the outcome of the Lot 1 and 2 during next meeting.
All right, I have a motion to table this, to the next meeting for more information. Second?
I need a second to respond to this one. You have a second? I'll second it. Commissioner Pika.
Is there a possibility that Armar could vote on this yet, being he's?
No, not, not present. We have to go with who's present at the, so we have a motion before us to table the next meeting. You call the vote at this time. I'm sorry. The motion is before us to table it. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, because I'd rather table it than deny it, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, this motion has been tabled at this time to the next meeting for more information regarding this application. So, thank you very much for information, for everyone contributing this evening as well. Our next item has been moved to the August 12th meeting, and I presume no one is here for that item. Just want to make sure, I don't know if we made public notice of that. Okay. There was a request for the Number 2024-036, a request to approve an abuse permit to operate a sand and gravel mine on 28.7 acres, charge grading excavation LLC, applicant and leeway charge, property owner in Section 5 of Beltane Township. This item has been moved to the August 12th, 24, planning advisory meeting. So we'll not be considering or hearing that motion at all this evening. Thank you very much. Our next item is the planning manager update. I'll go to Mr. Davis for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since our last meeting, one item that you recommended went to the county board, that was approving the interim use permit for sand and gravel mining, a JMH Sandpaper Range LLC, applicant Sam Hensh and Sons with the property owner, that was in Section 25 of St. Lawrence Township. So that was the one item. I wanted to let you know, we've provided a new way for residents to learn about projects on our agendas each month, and provide comments if they're not able to come in person. So starting last month, every public hearing notice that gets mailed out, and we usually mail them out either quarter mile or half a mile around the properties, depending on what type of application, we now provide a QR code for them to instantly get to our Speak Up Scott County website. And that's our online town forum webpage that we use to ask different questions. And now we're starting to post our staff reports on that page, so people can go right from their QR code to that page, read about the project, have a link to the staff report if they want to learn more, and then they can provide comments right in that system.
Right.
If they don't want to email or call the planner, or if they don't want to come here and speak to you in person.
So we see those in our reports, then?
Yeah.
In the future of us ultimately?
In the future, we can let you know that we receive so many comments on Speak Up Scott County, and here they were, or the planner can verbalize it the day of, because we'll monitor it all the way up to the.
Yeah, you know, this is a, sort of a follow up to the fact that we don't have a paper anymore. Remember, I mentioned that. So I just want to be clear on this. If I go to the Scott County site, I can run this down, can't I? I mean, if somebody says, how am I going to find out about all the things that are happening in the county? I say, well, you can go on the site, and then there's a way you can get to all of the agendas.
Yeah, everything that's on the planning commission agenda, sure. Yep. And it's all items that are having public hearings.
Yep.
That's the site that they could go to. So anyone can go to the site at any time, but we're specifically letting people that know about a public hearing notice about a project in their neighborhood, we're letting them know where they can go.
I appreciate that, thank you.
That is all I have for our case.
Thank you very much. Anything else for, because I apologize to everyone about not realizing that there's six commissioners here this evening. And I can count to seven.
I was going to say, we now know you can't count to seven.
I thought for a minute there, I'd lost my sense.
I know, you all looked at me like, what? So I apologize.
I think that was the hardest one to vote on. I mean, that was, that was, I mean, that was.
Yeah, it was.
I just was sitting on the fence, and I still am.
And, and it's so rare that we, we, you know.
It was that tough one.
Split like that, so, but everyone, good job. So thank you very much to the staff, and, and to everyone here, so, great job. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So in favor, aye. That would be six, sir.
Now there's six of them.